We get started. Good evening, everyone. Good to see, good to see everyone. I will call the meeting to order. Could I have a motion for the adoption of remote participation?
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, let's do our roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Steve will do Concord, yes.
Ford Spoling Dover, yes.
Is Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes. Sorry.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice Lucrestow, yes.
Okay, we did that pretty well.
Sorry about that.
That is okay. This, this is our, you know, kind of our warm up. Okay, moving on to for the good of the organization. I recently had the opportunity, you know, through the screening committee to go on a tour of the school. It has been so long since we all have been there. I have to say, as much as I know how amazing it is, I was still just blown away having the opportunity to go back and see it. And I thought it might be nice for us as a school committee to kind of have a chance to go back and do, you know, do another tour through the school and, you know, kind of remind ourselves of this, you know, extraordinary building and extraordinary program that's in it. So I had asked Ed to maybe identify some dates and you will see them on the agenda. What I would like to ask everyone to do is to take a look at those dates and let Julia know what dates will work for you. And then, you know, and, you know, this is totally optional for anyone who would like to do it. So that, you know, I'd like to see if we can, you know, you know, we may have to do more than one, but see if we, you know, can have some agreement on dates to have a school committee talk. So again, as if you're interested in doing that, why don't you just make sure you get to Julia by the end of the week?
Yeah, and we can do multiple tours. I mean, we have five or more of you. I'd have to warn that as a school committee meeting.
Oh, right.
So we should do multiple. So I'll tell you, so if everyone gives Julia the dates that you can do, we'll make sure that we, you know, we're able to split it up in the right ways.
Thank you.
Okay, so normally at this point, we'll be reviewing our subcommittee goals for this calendar year. And I have to admit, I forgot to bring it up at the last meeting. So what I would like to do is to ask every committee to meet, think about your goals for this coming year so that at our next meeting, we can come together and review them, you know, as a group kind of and look at and adopt a set of goals for us as a school committee. So I, you know, every committee should be meeting, or I'd like to ask, I guess, every committee to make sure that you're meeting between now and the next meeting in order to be adopting your committee goals coming here. So any questions on that?
If the goals haven't changed, do we still need to meet and vote on them?
If the goals haven't changed, you do not. Just send them on to Julia.
Because the negotiation subcommittee, you know, that's basically the same thing year in, year, year in, year out. We need to do the evaluation and with the new superintendent that might, but I don't really want to put that into a goal.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on that? And yes, if you're not talking, if you could please mute, thank you. Um, anything else for the good of the organization? If not. Oh, was that someone?
No.
No? Okay, let's move on then to the principal's report. George.
George is resting tonight, so we're gonna share his report, school transportation issues. Last time we, well, you've probably heard their school transportation's all over. I don't know, Anthony's closer to it than I am this last week. We don't have much to update, other than we're working within NRT. Anthony can give some other update if he has one.
Yeah, it's, it's been much better than it had been in the previous weeks, the last, let's say, two weeks. All the buses have been coming on time, so it's, it's been a significant improvement. And I know NRT, they're starting to move some of their drivers through, sorry, drivers through the process to get relicensed. I know that was something that happened with the number of the backlog from when they were not running as many buses before. So it's trending in the right direction. We'll continue to monitor it and keep our fingers crossed. We have, you know, late buses going as well now for activities and staying after school. Those have been coming on time as well. So, you know, those are all positives and better than it was probably at the last meeting that we had.
Jennifer.
Yeah, so one of the things that happens, at least as we get into the snow season, is the late starts. We just need to be really careful that, because I know when my kids were in school, the bus didn't, it didn't come two hours later. It came an hour, you know, 45 minutes late. So we need to communicate with the bus company that if, if it's a two hour delay, the bus needs to come two hours later, because there was one kid on the bus one day, because he's the only one who was out there, because he thought it was a regular start. So, so I think as we go, you know, with the complications that are happening as we go forward, keep that, keep that in mind as well.
Yeah, thanks. Steve?
Yeah, given the fact that I think we have one year left on the school bus contract, and I've been talking to actually one of my neighbors who was involved with an analysis for the, for the Concord schools of basically running, running the transportation system in-house, leasing the school buses and having, you know, town employees, in this case, as, as bus drivers. I'm just wondering if we should do an analysis, kind of a cost benefit between doing it the way we're doing now and, and that kind of scenario, because the, the contract is up in a year. It's going to take a while to do that analysis if we wanted to move forward that way.
Yeah, I mean, that's, sounds like a project for the finance subcommittee, Steve.
Thanks. I knew somebody would say that. Well, we can discuss that at one of our meetings.
Years ago, we did do an analysis. I think you and I talked about this where, you know, one of the issues we have now is storage. Where would we store our own buses? That sort of thing. Also fueling. I'm not sure we could have a fueling depot on campus. I don't know how that, there's a lot of issues in it, other than just buying your, leasing your buses and hiring people.
Yeah, that's why we need to do a cost benefit analysis, right?
We had a great consultant that worked with us on designing the RFP for the last transportation bid. And I know he's worked with districts to help them set up and to do, to do the analysis that you speak of. So we might touch base with him and see what, what his thoughts about it. Maybe have him meet with the FinCom, talk about it.
Okay.
His name's Richard Labrie. Julia, if you remind me, I'll, I'll call him or send him an email.
Any other questions on transportation?
The October one reports in your packet, if you can read it. It's kind of small. And I left my glasses in there on page three. No, no, it, it's trending as we predicted, a growing percentage of in district enrollment. And when Anthony talks about our admissions and process for next year, you can talk about that a little bit more. But I don't know if there are any questions on the enrollment charts that were in the packet. Seeing none. Homecoming event. This is fun. So Anthony gets to talk about the fun stuff. Because most of us don't know fun stuff anymore, but we heard about it. It's going to be on the 23rd. That's why we have a tour option. If you want to come early in the morning and stay for homecoming, you can make a day of it.
So yeah, so homecoming is, as Dr. B said, on October 23rd, it's, it's boy soccer, girl soccer, a football game. And then there's a homecoming dance for students in the evening. And I got to say, and for, I mean, a big shout out to Aaron Bordeaux, Brian Tilslie, Heather Plater, and Eric Norson for all their work in organizing this. And I'm sure, you know, countless others whose names I forgetting right now, so I apologize. But they've done a lot of work to put this together. Students are stoked. They're really excited about it. I think it kind of just goes to show the community that we're building and how kids are really excited to be at Minuteman and part of the community. Any kid you talk to, they're talking about, oh yeah, the dance. Oh yeah, I can't wait. All my friends are going. So it's, it's exciting. It's exciting to see kids be excited about these things as well. So, and it'll be the unveiling of the field, or the football field at least. So also, you know, an exciting benchmark on the completion of the Fields project as well. Does anyone have any homecoming related questions?
Okay. If I might continue, Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
I wanted to just make the school committee aware of some district level outreach that is, we have a superintendent's luncheon coming up next week and the week from today. I think we have all but one of our superintendents attending, including the, the new superintendent and the showbus coming, Kirk. I haven't met him yet, but looking forward to that. We also have legislative breakfast for Friday, October 29th. We have very good attendance at that as well. We're developing, Dan is developing a sort of a legislative packet that has to do with some statewide issues that are going through Beacon Hill as we speak when in regards to funding for chapter 74 programs as well in building study commissions. We found out today about some other bills that were being discussed around changes in licensure. So we're looking at those pretty closely and, and we're working with the MAVA leadership, the state level leadership around providing testimony and written statements to the legislators. But we've had a lot of work to do this year on the legislative side of things because, well, I think because of the admissions issue on the statewide level, there was a lot of attention paid to career and technical education. There's also a lot of interest, I would say, in innovation pathways at comprehensive schools and city schools. And so we've had to really keep track of what's going through the legislature, because there's been some pretty crazy stuff proposed. And fortunately, we've been able to, to get ahead of it. Also, we're working closely with the Alliance for Vocational Technical Education. And it's a, a group that I was involved in from the beginning that's made up of community-based organizations, very powerful business organizations, as well as traditional superintendents, CTE superintendents. So we don't always agree on everything all the time, but we do agree that high-quality career tech ed needs to be more accessible to more students. So the, the next thing we wanted to talk about, and Amy's going to give us an update on the test and stay program, which really got implemented beginning today.
Yeah.
Where's Amy? There you are.
Right here. Hi, everyone. Yes, so we started today and today went smoothly. We have about 100 and, last I checked earlier today, like 60, 60, 165 students that have given consent. We actually saw one student today for a mild symptomatic reason. They tested negative and they went back to class. So it's working the way it's designed so far, which was great. We have one full-time nurse, no, I'm sorry, it's not a nurse, a tester. One full-time tester right now that is there from beginning of school to end of school, five days a week. And we are scheduled to get one more, just so there's that redundancy and backup. In case someone's sick, we will always have a tester available. The, our area is our, it's called our COVID waiting room. We're using that. It's the room that we used last year for our COVID-related illnesses. So right across the hall from our nurse's office, so they work today, they worked really well. We have a coordinator who is extremely communicative with me and helping me navigate all the ins and outs of it so far. Granted, it's only been a day, but there's been a lot of work up to this day, has been very, it's been well-run. So we're hoping that it stays that way and hopefully we don't have to use it a lot, but it's there if we need it. Any questions?
I'll also just mention the Globe today came out, well, the governor today activated another 200 members of the National Guard to assist in the COVID-19 testing programs in public schools. So those National Guard members are going to be trained to do the testing, which doesn't require a registered nurse or even an LPN. But it shows that it's been difficult to get up and running across the state. And I think we're fortunate. Amy's been dogging them pretty hard the last few weeks to, to get it going here at Minuteman. So thank you, Amy, and, and thanks to Sarah and the nurses.
They've been great.
Okay, that's terrific. Any questions on this?
Yeah, it's Michael Ruderman. I've got one question, if I may.
Go ahead.
Please, you know, define for us again, the, the pool of kids who are being tested.
And so we're participating in two, two of the options. So we're doing symptomatic. So if a student comes to school, they, they come to school and they're feeling fine. And then sometime during the day, they start to get ill. If they are presenting with any of the symptoms that are outlined from, you know, DSC and the CDC as possible COVID symptoms, then they would go over, they would, our high school students actually swab themselves. It takes 15 minutes for the test to come back. And if they're negative, they still may go home, because they still may be sick. And if they're positive, then they go home as well and follow up with their PCP. So that's the symptomatic group. The other group is the test and stay group, where if they are found, if a student tests positive and they were in school, there, we figure out who their close contacts were in school. And then that group of students gets tested and they get tested every day for five days. And as so long as they come up negative, they continue to stay in school. So that's the hope, is that they continue to stay in school and test negative the whole time. But if they came up positive, if they were a close contact and came up positive, then it would resort to the protocols that we have in place for when students test positive.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Amy? Okay.
Ford.
School Building, can I?
Yes. Report.
As Anthony indicated, October 23 is homecoming. The stadium field will be completed and it's going to be hosting both boys and girls soccer and football. And I have to tell you, to my knowledge, the girls soccer and the football team are, I may have winning records. They're doing very well. I don't know about the boys soccer, but I'm going to assume they have a winning record also. So it, it may be well worth spending the day up there and watching it and to see the field, which is fully quite, quite stunning. The baseball turf, that field is going down. It's all green now. So they'll be striping it and doing all that. And I would assume that will be done within the next eight to 10 days. The softball field should receive its turf within the next 10 to 14 days. So that's going to proceed. So my calculation says, by the time we get to December 1, we should have an athletic complex, which will be the envy of many, many places. So when you go up and have your tours, you'll be able to see the progress that is being made. It is still a construction site, as I, as I've indicated, but they're going to take care and to make sure that it's all fenced off and, and safe and proper for the 23rd. So that's exciting and we are nearing the end.
Wow, pretty amazing. Well, congratulations. Any questions for Ford?
I have just a comment.
Yes.
It's pretty impressive when you go out there and see where the money went. You'll understand why it costs a lot of money. It's only when you get there in person and stand on it and look at it and see the, the size and quality that you say this cost, this is where the money went. Now I understand.
And Jeff, a lot of the money went, the barriers you don't see, which is underneath the field and the foundations and the drainage they put in. There will not be, there will not be any pools of water on that field, any of the fields, so.
So Ford, can you remind us, besides the field themselves, what else is going in? There's lighting?
Well, the lighting is in there. There'll be dugouts for both the boys and girls, baseball and softball. There's going to be equipments, some equipment storage, what is not going to, and there's going to be grassed in area. And the fields for both baseball and, and softball are multi-use fields, so practices could go on there. I think there's going to be tremendous opportunity for rental income on that field, just what we talked about. So it's going to be basically a grassed in area. Parking is going to be where the student parking is and all that now. The tennis courts are not in there. There are not, to my, going to be grandstands, although I think we're looking at maybe temporary. But they won't be there, I don't believe, for the 23rd, unless I'm going to be surprised. But the, the main grandstands, a little field, a field house will not be there in the tennis courts. But that's all part of the next generation of, of work to be done, which I hope will happen in the near future. We just need funding.
Okay, thank you. Judy.
Just one light question. Is there going to be a ribbon cutting ceremony?
I can't answer that. You have to talk to Anthony or Dr. B. I'm not in charge of ribbon cutting.
Okay.
We'll see what the weather is. I want everything to be done when we do that, you know?
Alice.
I think if we do any kind of ribbon cutting ceremony, we should have like 13 or 14 ribbons, one for each year. That's it. It took us to get to here. A lot of people don't realize that they kind of walked into this late. They don't know how long it took, but it's really, it's such a huge, huge thing, you know, to be at this point.
Well, for those of you who have been on the school committee since the beginning of this, I thank you for your perseverance. Alice shakes her head. Anything else? Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you, Ed. Thank you, Ford. Okay, let's move on to finance report. Rich, are you kicking us off?
I am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. I just have a couple of things bringing before you for votes. First of all, is the FY21 student activity accounts. I'm not going to go through everything, because it's pretty dry. I hope everyone had a chance to look it over. Is any questions?
Could I have a motion to approve the student activities accounts as presented? Any questions or comments? No? Okay, let's move to a roll call vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve will do Concord, yes.
Ford Spolding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice Lucrestow, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. The, the second one item is the FY21 revolving accounts. Again, it was in your packet and I'll answer any questions.
Okay, let's, why don't we, um, let's see, let's do the motion and then go to questions and comments.
So moved.
Do I have a second? I think, Jeff, you had a question?
Yeah, so a few things. The first thing is, this is very hard to read in its micro print and black and white. And some of it is in red, which is not visible. So I think that we should be mailed a larger version of this in color, so we can really see it. Talking about red, there is a lot of red on it and it's hard to interpret in the micro print and with that a little bit more historical knowledge here, but just to remind the committee. We had a great deal of challenge over a period of about five years to get control of these accounts and to eliminate the, the negative balances and the, to get the revenue and expenditures on these accounts in the proper balance, right? Revenue being greater than or equal to expenditures. And clearly during COVID, it was necessary to be a little less fussy about that in this, in a few areas especially. However, it is unclear to me, the overall picture of these revolving funds, which ones are doing well financially, which ones are not doing well? And the ones that aren't doing well, are they not doing well because of the year of COVID? Or do we have an ongoing problem? Because I certainly wouldn't be happy to go back to the situation we were really not all that long ago, when the finances of these things were very unfortunate. So the first thing is, I would like another copy of this, even after our discussion today, that I can read better. And secondly, could you go over where we're having some issues here? Which of these issues are temporary COVID-related and which are things that require more long-term attention? That's what I would like to know. And it's just a little hard to fully verify that with the form that's in front of me right now. So that's my, those are my questions.
Jeff, first I'm going to address the ones that are primarily the COVID situation. That would be child, childcare, I mean, the child development. We have, you know, obviously with the COVID, we didn't have students inside the building and we were still paying salaries out of that. So that one's easily explained. Similar to the food services, even though we were being subsidized, we're still paying employees out of that. The community ed and MTI, I am working directly with the director of that to improve that budget system. I think, I think some of that is based on, is, is related to COVID as well. But I also feel that we need to address the budget's development process with that one particularly.
Okay, I understand, but I would like a, I think that would be good for comparison purposes in future years, to have a report outlining the, the things that we expect to have been a one-year or one and a half year issue and the ones that we are focusing on moving forward and to have some discussion on that on the finance committee and on the school committee. Because I don't want these negative balances to fester. If we have to put some more money in it from the, from the budget, which is, we've done in the past, we need to do that. And if there's some of these that are going south because of issues with revenue, then we have to address that in the short term and not, not get back to the situation that we were in not so long ago. So I'd like the, I'd like the finance committee to look into that. Poor Stephen, another thing, but I think this is very important. I mean, the realities that happened this year, that we all understand very clearly, expected some of these negatives. But we, we, we needed nip it in the bud and put it on the firm. But we, we needed nip it in the bud and put it on a firm financial footing, even though if it means investing more money in them from the main budget. So those, those are my comments. I hope that I hear more about this in the near future.
And I'll just, I'll just add that the finance committee does look at these on an ongoing basis. So we have been trying to keep on top of it as well.
Ford?
I'm just curious about 213 culinary PS. I don't know what PS means, but culinary during the year of COVID, I think did an amazing job offering meals on a weekly basis because I know we, I participated in that. I don't know if they received any income from, I think, the Arlington and Lexington program, but it shows no income. Maybe it's not supposed to show income there, but I'm confused because I, I think they were extremely busy and I would assume they had good revenue.
That's the post-secondary program, which really didn't operate.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Um, Alice? Um, Alice, you're.
I'm almost, I'm also confused by the summer school lines and community ed. So at the bottom, there's a note that it was a fully funded by awarded grants and not reflected in the report. So there is a summer school in the community ed section with a small revenue. So I don't understand, I guess.
Nikki, can you explain the 850 revenue?
Yeah. Hi. When you look at fiscal years, that is actually the summer before, so July 2020 and August 2020, whereas our summer programs this year are actually in fiscal year FY 22, summer 2021.
Okay.
July 2021 and August 2021.
All right.
And as you know, with COVID, those programs didn't run. There was a little bit of revenue and most of it we had to refund, be refunded back if we didn't run the program.
So is the summer school 2021 that starts July 1st, it's in the next fiscal year, is that actually in some other place? It's not on this sheet. So how's that, how is it handled?
That'll be an FY 22 report.
Right, but it, the explanation says it was fully funded and it's not reflected. So I understand that it's in a different fiscal year, but from what I can, I guess I just was confused by the comment at the bottom.
Can, can I try and see, because maybe I'm got this totally wrong, but I, I think what Nikki just explained is with the, the 850 was summer school that was summer of 2020? Is that correct?
Correct.
That is correct. Yep. And this, this report is as of, you know, ends on June 30, 2021. So you wouldn't see the, any of the additional revenue or expenses in July and August until our next quarterly report. But we did receive grants to cover that. So none of those funding are going to go through the revolving accounts as you see here. They were, they were covered by different federal and state grants that we received.
So those will not appear in the FY 22 reports?
They will not because this is a revolving fund report in our, those were covered with grants. So it's covered by a different source of funding.
So, so can I just, just to make sure, I'm just making sure that I understand the note about summer school 2021 that really refers to the June 30th, 2022 report. Is that right?
Yes, okay. Correct. We just wanted to add that in to try to avoid any confusion, but maybe.
Okay, Alice, does that make sense now?
Yep, thank you very much.
Are there other questions? Judy?
This is a little changel, but as Jeff, as you started your conversation about the print being a little small to read, along the same line, and I don't know if this is possible, but the enrollment projections that we looked at earlier in the evening, if there's any way in the packet, they could be portrait or landscape instead of portrait because those of us with, you know, looking at these on laptops, you, you can't read it. It's, it's really hard. We almost have to print it at home and then try to read it. So thank you, Alice. So I'm just saying, just for consistency, so we're not going sideways. Thank you.
Then when we print it, it's very small. Whereas I was able to blow up the revolving fund report on my screen. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, let's let's move to a vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve LeDoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Cockle Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Stukas, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then would like to just, you know, underscore or repeat Jeff's request that we do get another copy of this. You know, with the, particularly with the numbers that are in color and color, so it's easier to read.
Okay.
Okay.
The next item I have for you is the list of donations from, and I'm from September. So that was in your packet as well.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the September list of donations?
Second.
Okay, any questions? Okay, let's move to a roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve LeDoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Cockle Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Stukas, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item, so budget calendar?
The last item I have for you is the FY 23 budget calendar. For your review, there's no vote necessary, just more for your information.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Rich about the budget calendar? Okay, thank you very much. And then I think the last item under the finance report is Steve's, uh, the formation of a study committee.
Thank you. So we have talked about this at the last couple of finance committee meetings. As you're aware, a lot of municipalities and school districts, the issue of the unfunded liability related to OPEB, other post-employment benefits, primarily health insurance benefits for those that retire. The, the accrued liability is, is huge and some communities and, and school districts have done better than others. They're trying to whittle away at that, that liability. When Ed and I went in front of a joint meeting of the Concord Select Board and Finance Committee, I get earlier this year, I think it was, we got a little beat up about our lack of aggressiveness on trying to fund our OPEB liability. We have about a $32 million liability. We've been typically budgeting 60,000 a year. So if you do the math, it's going to take a long time to, to get rid of that, that, that liability. And we've also talked in the past about when the ESCO leases over, using some of those funds towards OPEB. But, so we talked about it at Finance Committee and, and trying to see if we can come up with a strategy that, that deals with OPEB a little more, I guess aggressively than what, aggressively than what we've been doing. So we, we kicked around the idea of a, of a OPEB study committee. And I just wanted to point out the draft that you have in your packet is, is the draft I presented to the finance committee and there are a couple tweaks that for some reason didn't make it in the packet. So I can go over that with you, but obviously what we'd like to do is, is have, have a study committee that would first work with the consultant that, that does the, the actuarial analysis and, and try to understand the calculations and the assumptions that drive that number, because there are a lot of assumptions, because, as you know, actual, actual worries kind of live off, off of assumptions. Then come up with some action items of how we could deal with OPEB for FY 23 and beyond. And then try to understand what our investment policy has been. As, as many of you may know, we do have an OPEB trust fund. So we're suggesting a, a committee of five, one of which would be a member of our finance subcommittee. Secondly, the Assistant Superintendent of Operations and Facilities or designee, the district treasurer designee, and here's one of the changes that's not in your packet. A finance director from a member town or a finance committee member. So either way, either we get a finance director or a finance committee member from one of our member towns. And then and that large person with OPEB knowledge and expertise. So somebody that not necessarily is associated with the district. And if you may remember, I think last year we, we did pass a policy that allowed us that flexibility. And some of you may think, and you're probably right, that, that person that I'm thinking about, it could be Jim Gamble. I, I did have some conversation with Jim and if you remember, Jim was kind of our Papa OPEB when he was on the school committee and he does have a lot of expertise with it. So he has indicated that he would be interested in serving in this group. My understanding is we are due to get a new actuarial study in the very near future. The, it's only done like every three years. So we'll have new numbers to work off of and and to look at. So that's our finance committee recommendation to, to form this committee. Hopefully it will be short-lived and be disbanded in, you know, relatively short period of time once we've done our task. Be happy to answer any questions.
Jeff?
I'm just going to move the proposal to create the OPEB study committee with the changes that have been mentioned by Stephen.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions, comments, Jeff?
So just thank you, Stephen. I really like the way you're thinking. I like the way you're setting this up. It's the right way to go. I'm not happy that we have to deal with OPEB, but you know, there are a lot of things about life I'm not happy about, but thank you for your, you and the committee's thoughtfulness in how you're setting this up and just thanks again. It's all going to be a lot of work. I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
I just have one comment that when OPEB is not necessarily something everybody understands completely. So I think we were discussing whether, when the consultants would come and talk to the general school committee and my suggestion was that we wait until we have a recommendation from this, this subcommittee or this working group in order to review what they say. So if we have any questions for the consultant, we'll know then, you know, rather than just getting an overview of what it would be now and what OPEB means to us now. So that was my thought.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, let's vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve LeDoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Cockle Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Stukas, yes.
Hey, thank you. I, I really appreciate the finance committee taking this on.
And I guess we'll bring forth a, a membership list for the, for the school committee to vote on at the next meeting, hopefully.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to other committee reports. Superintendent Screening Committee.
Thanks, Pam. I think, I hope you all know that on October 1, we posted the position of, for superintendent at Minuteman and those applications and interests should be submitted to the school. I think by 3:00 PM on November 12. So we're in a holding pattern for that and that's all I can tell you about that. What we're doing, our goal is to present to the school committee, hopefully December, late December, I suspect, finalists, two or, two or more finalists for your action or our action in the beginning of January. So that is still our goal and that we're working towards. I want to invite you to go to the Minuteman website, not now, but later, and go to the superintendent's page. And if you do that, after the second line down, you'll see superintendent search process 2122. And on there you'll see our documents. The first document is the committee members that you voted to have on the committee. We've had one meeting, basically an organizational meeting. Yes, Pam said we had a tour. And everybody but one person was there. And then we had a meeting to just go through the process. Below that is the Minuteman District Profile, which I believe you've all seen, but it's on the website. The Minuteman Superintendent District Profile. That is the document that we as a subcommittee, as a screening committee, are really going to be judging our candidates on that document. And that's what I would ask the school committee when it gets to be your turn to use that document. We are forming, we will be having a meeting, I think it's the fourth of next month. Off the top of my head to go over questions that we're going to be potentially asking our candidates. And that process, we've started that process and we'll have a public session because we have to to go over the questions. It's sort of weird, but that's the open meeting law. We need to go over the questions in open meeting. So we will be doing that. Then after that is the invitation that went out and it covered through Glenn Kuchar's office. It went out to, I think, everywhere throughout the world. So we'll see what happens. And then the final download is the application. On that application, it's probably worth your noting that near the end, there are three questions that we've asked them to answer, which is going to mean you're not filling in a blank. You're going to have to think and, and write out your answers. And we think that was key. Glenn Kuchar led me to believe, whether he's being nice or not, that this is probably one of the more thorough processes you've seen to date. We'll see what happens as, as we go along further. So that's it. I don't know if Alice or Pam has anything to add to that, but that's where we are.
Hey, Alice?
Just a point of clarification. Right at the beginning, Ford, you said that the applications would go to the school, but I think you meant that they would go to MASC.
That's exactly right. MASC will be holding the applications and holding all the documents and material. As I think you all know, the process that we are going through is a confidential process. It's going to be an executive session because it's to protect the candidates, not Minuteman, because most, many of the candidates have not notified their current employer that they're looking at this. And soon as the finalists are announced and we, the school committee look at it, that then is a public process and they will have notified their employer or what they're doing. But ours is strictly the screening committee and they all know that they're not supposed to talk to anybody about anyone who's applying or anything. So that's, we are, Alice, does that do it? Thanks. Pam?
No, that's it. Sounds good, Ford.
Good. You know, it's, we have an exciting group and I think as I told them, in November and December are going to be very busy so they can celebrate the holidays in January.
Okay, thanks very much. Let's move on to CAA. Jeff?
What a mouthful. CAA, okay. So we have some reports from Dan and Anthony and we'll do those reports first, then I'm going to have a few comments at the end of that.
Okay.
So Dan, then Anthony, per the agenda.
Everybody, thank you for letting me present. I'll be rather brief. But I just wanted to give a quick update on communications, just because there's been more than usual behind the scenes. So I want to make sure everyone's aware of the work we've been doing. Anthony and I have worked. Anthony and I have worked pretty closely together, as always, but this summer, putting together a couple of brochures. We wanted to kind of revamp the materials to kind of highlight what's new at Minuteman. Also sort of highlight the life at Minuteman and give some of the, you know, human interest edge to it as well. So that's one big project. The other big project was the, there's a development of a new website that we hope to launch in December. That should be a lot more robust, and I hope it's a lot more attractive to prospective parents. This is, I, most of this is just pictures. I'm just going to talk over. You guys all should have gotten the brochures in your packet. We, over the course of the year, I interviewed a lot of students and alumni. So one of those brochures is sort of like a collection of those interviews and put into kind of Reader Digest versions. Ed, could you go back one slide, actually? Other way. Thank you. In the bottom left-hand corner, you might see, we tried to include some stats just on the success rates from the most recent year of graduates, which, given COVID, was still pretty good with ninety-two percent going right into college or career as soon as they graduated. So I wanted to sort of highlight that as well. You can go to the next one. This is just, again, sort of playing up athletics, our new fields, the, the life at Minuteman. So we had the first robotics club, which was very successful. We had the female student who refurbished the nineteen fifty-one Ford, excuse me, GMC pickup truck. I also wanted to really play up the co-op program. That just seems something that's very special to Minuteman, that really gets students our hands-on experience. We had done a couple of interviews and repurposed those, electrical and horticulture. So that was pretty cool. This is a flyer we put out actually this past weekend when we were at the Rediscover Lexington event, which I'll talk about in a quick minute. This was more to advertise our public services. So we had the MTI Adult Learning Courses, because some of those are the CTI grant-funded ones, and the Plumbing Code Courses are about to open up again. We put the QR codes in there so people can just scan it and go right to the website. Trying to promote, as you know, the restaurant is open again in person, and then some of our other services, the salon, the auto repair, and the daycare center, which while it is at capacity, we wanted to remind folks. And importantly, the backside of that flyer on the right outlines our facility rentals. I know Dr. B. has talked about that quite a bit over the last couple of years, but now we're really going full force. Erin Norperson is with us as our facilities coordinator. So we've been trying to push a lot of that as well. And I know she's already getting a lot of calls about facilities to rent at Minuteman. Just to get another reminder, we're doing a website again. This is a stock photo, so this will obviously be a different photo. But I'm pretty excited about that work. It's a lot of work we're doing behind the scenes. Allison Berry and June McNamara, the two Design Visual Communications teachers, have been a tremendous help as we put this together, and we're doing weekly calls with our new vendor final site. So I really hope that's a state-of-the-art website that really makes us more competitive with some of these schools in our member towns in our area. So I'm really looking forward to that. You can go to the next slide. You can even go to the next one. This is just a picture. If you, I could send you if you, if you're interested. These are links to some other local and one from New York districts that have this vendor. It's, it's pretty robust. It's a little more robust than I think we're used to. On the bottom left is a Bosse's in New York, so they do career tech at as well, in case you're interested and want to look at their site. I recently hired a photographer, Rebus Eldana, who's out of Andover. And this is a short-term work to get a lot of professional photos for marketing purposes for Minuteman. We're really going soup to nuts. We're taking photos of every single CTE program, academics. She's been covering a lot of the sports games as well. So some of the pictures are on the site now, but they're, they're really needed for that new website. They really need high-quality images, and obviously that'll help us out with brochures. And I hope to hire, you know, to do this every two or three years, just getting a good you know, amount of professional photography to help us market the school. And some of these are just some of the pictures she's taken in the last few weeks. On the left is the Childcare Center. On the right is multimedia. You can go to the next one. The restaurant, the horticulture students with the beehives outside, which is we got to wonder how many other schools have beehives. I don't, you can go to the next slide. There's some female students in carpentry. This is after a boy's soccer win. I think that was Notre Dame. Another project which we just completed, I'm literally trying to finalize the files so I can share it with the wider community, but we, we did an athletics rebranding. You know, and this will go in line with the new facilities, the fields, et cetera. We did a few focus groups with the faculty and staff, and we tried to make it a diverse group. So it was some coaches, but also some of the graphic design teachers, some people who are staff members who previously worked at college athletics departments to really get a good sense of what people wanted. So I feel very confident that the branding that, that Dr. B. finalized is very reflective of what the group feedback was after a few different iterations of that. So that's exciting. And then there's a lot of the day-to-day communication. I won't get into that, but we're, you know, I've been very busy with COVID stuff, with the test and stay, with the bus route stuff. Also been liaising with the NPA. The President Ellen Lawton has been a really great ally with us and wants to really partner with us to always have the best outcomes for the students. This is, again, just links. I know you guys have already been aware of this, but we, we were pretty lucky. We got two TV stories in a week, which is phenomenal. If I get one a year, I'm happy. So we got two recent ones. The Animal Science Program was profiled on Channel Four, which was really great. And I have to really thank the, the Animal Science Instructor Sasha, the Advisory Board Member Lauren Champagne, and then Blue Pearl, our veterinary partner. We shot the story at Blue Pearl Hospital, Animal Hospital in Waltham. And it wouldn't have been a story without those visuals. So it was really a great media hit for us. Social media, it keeps on trucking. We're always going to have more followers every year as there's a new group of parents and students. But I think the percentage increases are beyond just that. And I think that's because we're consistently posting on social media. So we've had some pretty significant percentage increases on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. We're going to relaunch the monthly newsletter. Again, a lot of that is repurposing content that we're already putting out, so it's not a huge lift. But it is a great way to communicate. Not all of our parents are on social media. It's just great to have something in your inbox that you can just get a quick glance on what's going on at the school. And lastly, I mentioned this earlier, but a bunch of us had a table at Lexington Rediscovery Day this past Saturday. I was blown away at how highly attended it was. We were busy literally from eight-thirty till three in the afternoon. A lot of flyers given out. We had student ambassadors, so shout out to them. I don't know if Sheila is on this, Sheila Nagel, who runs that group. You know, I really appreciate how quickly she got some students. We had four students in total who were really excited. They were very, very well-spoken. They love talking about the school. There was a real interesting divide of Lexington families who either knew everything about Minuteman or were very unaware of Minuteman and were blown away that this resource was in their own town. So I, I think it was a big success. And, you know, thank you to all my colleagues who are in this picture, Erin, Anthony, and Nancy Hool, the Director of MTI, who really helped put all this together. So that's pretty much it. I just wanted to give everyone a quick update, because there's just been a lot going on. But it's, like I say, it's a good busy, and, you know, the staff and the faculty here make my job easy because the content is just so interesting and compelling. And that's not anything I do, that's what they do, and I just get to tell people about it. So it's been a pretty busy, but, but fun, busy kind of time for, for communications.
Thanks, Dan. I have to say, the materials look fantastic. Really appreciate them. Ford?
Yeah, Dan, you do a great job, and you know I know that. Could you send us the PowerPoint that you just showed so we can look at it more? Dan, you got me very nervous. When I saw the branding pictures and, you know, and we have a logo, which I assume will not change, on the football field, I would hate to think that we're going to change that logo, but I know Ed won't let that happen, so.
Everything's okay.
It's an expensive logo, so.
No, we're, we're not changing the football field.
I just, it went through my head, so.
A lot of the, Ford, a lot of that came from frankly, uniforms and just, you know, the, the team, the coaches not having a consistent look and feel. And so that's, that's where a lot of that came from.
So I applaud that. I won't be nervous now.
Other questions for Dan? Alice?
Not a question, but I just wanted to say, I think, once again, Minuteman is going to be driving change in education in central Massachusetts and beyond. I mean, this, this looks great. It's completely way above the top in terms of, you know, compared, comparison to other school districts, and it's great. I mean, once again, it's going to, it's going to raise the bar for everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other comments? Judy?
Just with gratitude for doing Lexington, Lexington's, it was an annual before COVID, and it's coming back, the Rediscovery Day. So thank you to everyone who participated.
It was a great event.
I just got to say that Dan and Erin and Anthony making a great team, along with Julia. I mean, today, we hosted the Middlesex Valley Superintendent's Roundtable here at Minuteman. So it's not only this kind of stuff, but it's also, you know, creating events here at school for me. Everyone else makes his job easy. I make his job hard. But it, it's, we're now, it's so much fun to outreach and have everybody come. You know, I didn't realize how much I miss it and how much I will miss you all. Next item?
Anthony?
All right, I'll keep it brief. We're, you know, admissions season is really just kind of at the, the beginning of it here. We've begun our presentations to our sending schools, some of which are in-person, some of which are remote. We were up at Luther Burbank. It was our first in-person presentation in two years. It was, it was great to be up there and to see the young people from Lancaster. We were at the Diamond Middle School today. We will be there three more times between this week and next, because we're trying to keep the groups relatively small, and it's a very large school. So, but they're, we're very grateful that they've accommodated all of our requests. We'll be out at Dover Sherborne at the end of the week, and a couple of virtual ones here and there as well. So those are going, that's good. Again, just to commend our student ambassadors who present at each of those presentations. They are phenomenal. Their stories are as, as good as I may or may not be at presenting what the school is. They represent it better than anyone else can. And sometimes, the other day, they had to come to school early so that we could get to Lancaster by eight forty-five. When we go to Dover, that's also super early, and the kids are coming early to get out there. So they, they take a lot of pride in it, and I know the ones that get to go back to their alma maters are always very, very excited to be able to do that. So, so those are in process. You know, Dan and, Dan and I have worked hard on those brochures to get out, so some mailings have begun going out as well. And then the applications start coming in. I don't like to do too much data analysis this early, but I can't help myself sometimes. So, you know, even from last year where we are up from where we normally are in October, we're up like thirty-eight percent from last year. I mean, the, the numbers aren't huge, right? It's like forty apps, but that's about fifteen percent of the total apps we got all of last year. So having that before anyone's really visited the school, those are all good things. And I'm just talking about in-district applications that are complete in terms of where they would be at in the process right now. There are also seventeen out-of-district applications, just for reference, as well. We have our showcase day. So again, a number of towns still have restrictions on field trips in terms of their district policies. So we will have four of the nine-member communities will be at Showcase Day on November tenth. And just to refresh everyone's memory, Showcase Day is essentially a field trip from the member towns, sending schools to Minuteman, where they go visit two of our career and technical education majors. There might have been some other stuff we would do in the past with food, but I think just because of COVID, we're going to, we'll send them with something on their way, but I don't think we'll have them eating in the school. So that's November tenth, and so the towns that'll be there are Acton, Arlington, Concord, and Lexington. That's November tenth, November fifteenth. We're going to do one of the things that came out of COVID that was actually much better, which is a virtual family information session. We can videotape it, we can send it out, so we'll hold it live on November fifteenth. That'll have some parents. We're thinking about maybe including some alumni in there, maybe some students as well on that date. And then November twenty-first, we have scheduled our open house, which is a Sunday from ten AM to one PM. We continue to do tours. I think I start, I had one this evening, but they start, there's a couple going on this week. Kids who have like half-days, their parents are already trying to schedule them. It was a little easier last year because everyone was home. So, you know, they were just, you know, during their asynchronous time would schedule a tour, and their parents were all working from home. But while a lot of families still are, it's trending towards, you know, in, in, in a good way, kids being in the school building all day, every day. And, you know, parents may, may or may not be working from home. So I think I have three evenings in November I'll do tours. That's, that'll at least start it off, and then we'll add more in December. We'll do some weekends and things like that as well. Yeah, that's pretty much it from admissions. You know, we talked about the October one numbers before. I just would like to emphasize that we are now at eighty-two percent in-district students total. And the classes of twenty-four and twenty-five, so freshmen and sophomore, which make up more than half of our school at this point, is ninety-two percent in-district. So we're trending in the right direction. It's obviously from all the hard work of you all and everyone who was involved in getting this school built, where, as I described to the screening committee on our tour, what we've really done is we've, you know, lifted the curtain off the unicorn that is Minuteman. We had great programs, great teachers, and great kids always, and now we have the building to reflect all those people and programs. So, you know, it's, it's a fantastic, you know, educational experience to communicate to our member communities. And that's it on admissions, if anyone has any questions.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Few comments on the CAA. The first one is, Dan, I hope that those fabulous-looking marketing print documents will be sent as print documents to the school committee member so we can physically show them around, the ones that are actually being printed, because I'd like to have them in hand.
Absolutely.
There are a few other issues that you should know that the CAA is working on. In particular, two very important documents that, one of which Alice is working on, the admissions policy draft. So we don't forget what's happening in the state and all the the politics and the policy and the lack of policy and whatnot. And we have to codify what we're going to do in a technical document, which is our admissions policy document, which has been worked on, and a shorter document for humans to read about an explanation of the admissions. an explanation of the admissions policy that we can send to all of our member communities so that this year there'll be no questions or mistakes on how they should proceed with deadlines and whatnot for member towns to students to, to apply and whatnot. And those two things are being worked on. We also have to make sure we keep on track as we have more students enter. We have to, of course, have a place to put them. And they can't all go, if we keep this up for another few years in our current building, the way it is now. So you know that there are plans afoot to expand some of these programs into other buildings, which is going to cost money to do. And it's important that we time the creation of the new spaces before the new students arrive. And this is a multi-year project, which is going to extend beyond Dr. Bo Quillen's tenure with us. So we really have to keep track of all those moving pieces, the students that we admit, which might be a big group again this year. And having the facilities to put the expanded, the students from the expanded school in those facilities. So that's, we're keeping track of that as well. And finally, I just want to mention that I've been here, as you know, for a very, very long time. And I can say that Dan, together with Anthony and other people working in communications, is the strongest team we've had in my tenure here. And there isn't a close second. That's what I'm seeing from the things that are being created from the pace that they're going, from the data that they're tracking. And I just wanted to mention that, that as I say, is the strongest team we've had and there's nobody in second place that's nearby. If there are no questions, that's the end of the CAA report.
Any questions or comments for Jeff? Okay. Thank you to Dan, Anthony and everyone who is working on this really important work. Moving on to secretary's report. Alice?
So we should take two votes because there were some people absent at different meetings. I didn't receive any comments on the minutes. So we need a motion to approve September fourteenth minutes.
So moved.
Second. Sorry. Jumping in. No. Okay. Let's move to a vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman, Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue, Concord, yes.
Wood Spaulding, Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Abstain.
Judy Crocker Lexington. Okay. I was going to say the same. Judy Crocker Lexington abstained.
Dev Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice Silukas, so yes. Thank you. So the next one is so confusing looking at these minutes. Hang on just a second.
Twenty-fourth, I think. Twenty-third?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, yeah. September twenty-third, correct.
Second.
Anybody have any little edits?
Okay, let's do our vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman, Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue, Concord, yes.
Wood Spaulding, Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Dev Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice Silukas, so yes. Because we're doing so great with the minutes and approvals of those types of things. I did suggest to Pam that we all consider whether we could have a consent calendar, which is a mechanism for not having to record ten thousand roll call votes on minutia. So
Yes. And after tonight's meeting?
You can structure it that way. In the officers' meeting, we can review the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah. We've, we've been, we've been so good.
Yeah, these used to take hours. Believe it or not.
That's a great idea. We have two advantages. The first thing is that the minutes are being done extremely, extremely well. And the second thing is that there are certain members who are, who are not here, which I think drag things out unnecessarily. So those, both, both those things are necessary for the speed at which we're getting through this stuff.
Well, thank you all for your attention to the minutes. That's the end of the secretary's report.
Okay, thank you. And I do want to say, Jeff, you are absolutely right that the minutes are being done very well. And I know that both Julia and Alice put a lot of time into the minutes. So
I actually read all the minutes and it shows because there's no unnecessary stuff in here. And the stuff that should be in there is in there in proper, clear English. And that is a rarity in this world.
Yeah. Yep. So thank you both. Okay, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Okay, our last roll call vote for the evening. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman, Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue, Concord, yes.
Wood Spaulding, Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Dev Stul and Needham, yes.
Oh, Silukas, so yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Don't forget to get back to Julia about dates for a tour that you're available. I look forward to seeing everyone.
Yeah, go Sox.
Sometime. Okay, bye-bye.